Very good.
We're now recording.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Hillmer. I'm the Vice Mayor of the City of Larkspur. We're waiting for Kevin Haroff, Mayor of the City of Larkspur, to arrive. But in the meantime, we're going to begin the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. We're operating under the governor's order for to conduct public meetings over the Internet. Scott, correct me if I got a description wrong. This order is renewed monthly, if I understand correctly. So we will be operating under the governor's order this evening. And the first item on the evening's agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll begin that. I think we have an image to help.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do we need you to roll call to start the meeting?
Thank you, Scott. It's a good idea. Allison, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer?
Here.
And I'll note, Mayor Haroff has not arrived yet.
Thank you, Councilmember Candell. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance as the next item. Please say after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Our first public comment will come from Rick Adler.
Welcome, Rick. Happy holidays.
Thank you. I propose that we build a new city hall, library, community center combo on the Rose Lane site topped with solar panels to save big dollars on construction, maintenance, and management. First floor is for the community center, the second floor for the library, the third floor for the city government offices. Because all evidence suggests that the pandemic will become endemic and plague us forever, design it with lots of easy opening natural ventilation, but that can be closed tight with an air purification system for wildfire smoke season and as a refuge for the elderly and others with breathing problems. Also for protection from airborne viruses, there should be an outdoor stage and amphitheater next to the first floor community center, covered, of course, with solar panels like in the Redwood High School parking lot for rain and shade. As for the current site where the city hall is, I suggest it be sold for big bucks to pay for all this to a world-class restaurant. They would also be built with a first floor for parking and take out the second floor for indoor dining and third floor for a top-of-the-world, big-view, outdoor restaurant. That would be very popular because we're going to continue to need outdoor restaurants with the pandemic becoming endemic. And because outdoor dining up high would be much tastier and nicer than outdoor dining on Magnolia with cars whizzing by two feet from your table. I have lots of other suggestions for this new building, but don't want to take up your time. So to be continued. I thank you very much for listening.
And thank you for your creative and thoughtful comments. There'll be a public process, and you'll have many opportunities to provide these and other ideas you have. Thank you very much. Allison, are there other public comment?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email comments. And there's no further public comment. I'll note that Mayor Haroff has arrived to the meeting.
I will hand over the meeting to Mayor Haroff, and we are on the business item, item three on the agenda.
And I want to first say thanks to Vice Mayor Hillmer for taking over because I had incorrectly countered this for 6:30. So.
No worries.
So we are on agenda item number 3.1. Just give me a moment, and I'll get my list. So agenda item number 3.1, election of mayor and vice mayor. And this will be a ceremonial act and one that I've been looking forward to and relish this evening. This is an annual ritual to confirm and commemorate the continuity of our elected form of government here in Larkspur. I've had the pleasure of serving as the city's mayor for the last year. The upcoming new year provides an opportunity for new leadership and direction within our city council, and I'm very pleased to preside, at least initially, over that transition. So we'll just get right to it. I think my first order is to call for nominations for Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would nominate Gabe Paulson as Vice Mayor.
Do I have a second? Catherine looks like she's smiling, but she's muted.
I think I saw Scott unmute himself.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hillmer?
Yes.
Mayor Haroff?
Yes. So the motion passes, and we have a new Vice Mayor. Congratulations. Great, Gabe. Look forward to your leadership. Next is a call for nomination for mayor. And I would like to assert a prerogative to make that motion unless anyone objects. Seeing none, I'd like to move the nomination of Dan Hillmer to serve this coming year as mayor of the City of Larkspur. Do I have a second?
A second.
Gabe, you two it, Scott. So I think we have a motion and a second, and we'll call for a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hillmer?
Yes.
Mayor Haroff?
Gratefully, yes. And I think that requires some administrative work by our city clerk at this point to make a transition.
Thank you. At this time, I will be renaming our councilmembers in the Zoom meeting. Give me one moment to type these out.
You don't get to get up and switch chairs? That's much more fun.
I'm going to send my backgrounds to somebody. I've got a lot of comments about.
Your God rays that are behind you.
Hang in there, Gabe.
And everybody has been renamed to their new title. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to offer this opportunity to former Mayor Haroff, if he has any remarks he would like to make this evening. We've certainly appreciated your leadership, and you've done a great job. We faced many challenges this last year, and you've really stepped up. And I appreciate, we appreciate, all the hard work and effort in being the mayor for our city council. I'll give you the floor.
Well, thanks, Dan. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity for this last year and the continuing opportunity to serve as a council member for the City of Larkspur. This is the best little city in the state of California, if not the United States. And it's been a pleasure to provide whatever leadership I've been able to offer over the course of the last year. But one of the things that makes me most proud is what we're doing tonight, which is doing what we always do around this time of year, which is to transition from one stage of our leadership to another. And I am really proud and grateful for the opportunity to welcome Dan Hillmer to take that role going forward in the coming year. Dan has been a member of the city council for as long as I know, and has been a leader in this community in so many ways that I can't even count. This is yet another opportunity to provide that leadership. I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for Dan's involvement with our community, with the city, and I'm grateful as well for the involvement and support and engagement of every member of this council. It's really been a pleasure to be in the role that I played for the last year, but it's time for me to go. So thank you.
Not so fast, Kevin. You're not leaving. You're not going anywhere.
Well, thank you. I know, but you know, it's a different role, and it's one that I welcome.
Well, Catherine?
Do I have the floor?
Yes, please.
Zoom desk that I have right here?
Yes, please.
Kevin, thank you very much for a year of working with us and your service to Larkspur and the community. We met in 2013 when we were both running for office, and I think we've both matured in this role to understanding what our expectations and limitations are. And it's been particularly challenging in the last two years. I will tell you, being a mayor last year was probably the hardest year I've had, and this year was equally hard and a lot of uncertainty, a lot of things you had to navigate with the city in this remote world, which is very difficult to develop community in. And I think you did an exemplary job with it. I think the revitalization of the Chamber of Commerce continues, and we have a lot of opportunity that way to build back Larkspur better than ever with the renewed energy towards our business community. And you've been really instrumental in that. So I really appreciate that. I think the other thing I've noticed this year is you've been very present to the community, even in this remote landscape that we're all navigating. You've been very present. You've been attending so many different things, regardless of whether it was in person or not in person. So I think that's a real key part of what our role is in local governance, is to be seen and be available and be heard and to listen to people. So I've noticed you've done, I think you've really matured in that role. I don't mean matured, but I think you've really become just more adept at that role, and it showed this year. So and then lastly, on a personal note, I think you've been very supportive of me with the family illness and limitations that I've had to deal with this year. So I appreciate that extra reach out and helping me to navigate my timeouts when I sometimes had to zoom off camera. So see you. We'll see you around. You're not going anywhere.
I know. Thank you.
Are there other councilmembers that would like to say nice things about Mayor Haroff?
Well, yeah, I think I want to echo a lot of what Councilmember Way said. And I started, you know, two years ago, and my first partner in, you know, any kind of committee, ad hoc committee, was Councilmember Haroff. And I feel like the wonderful thing about, you know, being in this role is there are 55, well, 54 teachers, you know, everybody in this room, and, you know, all the other councilmembers can teach you something. And one of the things I really learned from, you know, Councilmember Haroff was going through a difficult discussion with the mobile home community, the kind of patience, the kind of thoughtfulness, and largely the gratitude. I think there's never been a comment where he doesn't respond with, I appreciate that. I appreciate that comment. And I think that matters. And I think it's whole, you know, sincere, and it, you know, gave me a reason to listen in and also to remember to acknowledge the listeners and, you know, people we work with. And also, just the way that you wanted to bring back the Pledge of Allegiance and the transition to power. I mean, we are maybe the greatest city, but we're also very tiny, 12,500 people in a very divided nation right now. And any gesture, any symbol, any effort towards bringing people together and bringing a level of integrity and grace back into politics is highly appreciated. And I think you do that. And you dress that way, too. And then lastly, the MCE. I mean, I think there's plenty of committees who are working on the housing element together. And then you've been very active with the environment and reaching out to people. And every meeting I go to, I think you're there, whether it's chamber or Ruben Martin's talking up at the hotel or something. So as, you know, Councilmember Way said, your presence, your involvement, it's not lost on me. And I just feel like we're all here to work and also to inspire each other and inspired. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Gabe.
All right. If I can just chime in real quick. Kevin, I just wanted to personally thank you as a mentor. You've been in the political game a heck of a lot longer than I have, and you set a great example. The way you run a meeting, the way you are respectful, even when you respectfully disagree. It's inspiring, and it's something that lets some of us who are newer in politics, gives us something to look up to and something to aspire to. So I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I share all those comments. And I also want to express my gratitude for what I've learned from you, especially in how to run a respectful meeting. I really have an appreciation for the pace that you give to the meeting, where you make sure that we express gratitude to every speaker and cover all the informational basis on the way to a decision. So I in not so much an homage, but we're going to keep the pledge on the agenda. And that's very important. And you've shown us how important that is, especially during these challenging times. So with that, I have a couple of comments I'll make. I'm going to keep it brief. I mainly want to thank our city staff for all the work that they've done, especially in the last couple of years. Although that doesn't diminish the work in any other year that takes place. The city staff, our department heads, every staff member. I hope to publish a Marin Voice piece where we list as many city staff members as possible and give great thanks. And I'll explain later why we've achieved a bit of a leadership role in the county with respect to our infrastructure. And I want to acknowledge that properly. And we'll do that at the right time. But I want to thank the city staff, our public safety employees, our first responders, public works, employees, library staff, city planning and building staff, rip parks and recreation staff, and all the agencies that we share services with, too, the county, town of Corder Madara, City of San Anselmo. We do so much together. And I think that's an important message to reflect upon today. We don't take this for granted. Larkspur happens because of all the workers that we have here and all the volunteers that step up and help out. So that's an encouragement to everybody listening tonight. And when the opportunity arises, please step up and take part. That includes a public comment during meetings. If anybody asks you to take part in an event or a community service, it's worth it. And you'll make friends. And if you haven't already, you'll realize that's why we all like to live in Larkspur our whole lives. Nobody ever moves. So that constitutes my remarks this evening. I'm very grateful to be able to serve as the meeting chair for the next year. I'll do my best to listen as much as possible and learn from everybody. And try to keep everybody in the boat and the boat moving forward. I learned that analogy from a former city manager, Harlan Berry, who pounded into me the importance of keeping the team together no matter what. So I promise I'll do my best to do that and do it in as brief as possible. As possible. So with that, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of.
Mr. Mayor, don't we usually do a traditional fire?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. I neglected the Volunteer Firefighter Association traditional handing over of the gavel. And I apologize deeply for that. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll be bringing over our Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation representative so they can join the council.
My bad. Really sorry. I know how important this is.
And there we go.
Yeah.
And Mike McDermott is coming in. Good evening, council. Hello, Mike.
Hi, Dennis. Hi, Mike. I really apologize.
It's okay.
I was thinking about a resident who passed away, and I was moving to that. So my apologies.
No, it's okay. I tried to sign on last night because the calendar said Wednesday. Then I looked at the day of the month. So Mike and I are proud to be here to represent the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation, which continues on a tradition of carrying on the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Department that goes back to 1908. And as part of that tradition, oh, Dan, are you going to show us your gavel collection from prior years?
I just have this one, and it's still in plastic.
You're saving us money.
Well, more importantly, you haven't had to use it.
Okay, Mike, fire away.
Good point.
Well, thank you, council. We really appreciate the recognition, tradition, and the importance of the volunteer firemen in the history of Larkspur. So to keep with the tradition, we are proud to present the gavel to the incoming mayor, Hillmer. And just some words of advice to have a successful term. And this came from a famous Uncle Skinny. Stand up to be seen. Speak up to be heard. Sit down to be popular. So thank you, council, for all your service, and especially through these challenging times. And your leadership has been very recognized by the people in our special town and city of Larkspur. Happy holidays to you and happy new year to everybody. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we recognize how important the Volunteer Firefighters Association Foundation is to the city. Members have sacrificed their lives in protection of property here in the city. And we really take that deeply and will never forget. And we're grateful for all of your help and your participation in this annual transition. So I look forward to your participation in the challenges we face in the upcoming year. Your advice is always taken seriously and very helpful.
Great.
Thanks very much.
And hopefully, this gavel won't come out of the back. It's a good sign.
I protect it.
And congratulations.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. And this evening, we're going to adjourn in the memory of resident Bill McCown. Bill passed away about a week ago. He was a longtime Larkspur resident. His lovely wife, Brenda, and he were very valuable volunteers in many of our city events. Bill was a member of the Larkspur Bagpipe Band. The Bagpipe Band's a very important organization in the city. They act as ambassadors of a sort, including playing at Giants baseball games, AT&amp;T Park, representing the city of Larkspur, and giving a very favorable image for the city. I have an anecdote. I was at Piper Park a few months ago, attending a memorial service for the one of our residents, Miss Cindy Winter, longtime bike activist. And the Bagpipe Band just happened to be practicing next door to the event in the park, just adjacent to it. And they offered to play Amazing Grace for us at the memorial. And that simple decision, those few minutes of that music transformed the park into a cathedral. So, so important that our volunteer organizations be recognized and how important we all feel about working together here in the city. And Bill McCown was a very important man in this regard. He was a gentleman in every way. Bill suffered from Parkinson's disease, and he suffered the last few years. And he stayed active. He continued to give me mentorship at the local government level, always stayed active, stayed informed. And he offered to loan me his kilt when I was asked to perform a wedding ceremony for one of our residents. So I was very honored and pleased to wear a kilt of the Larkspur Bagpipe Band and officiating a wedding ceremony for one of our residents. And that took place about a month ago. And it was my great pleasure to be able to talk with Bill McCown, be with his lovely wife, Brenda, and experience his last months here in Larkspur with some invigorating conversation. And he advised me to the end. He talked right up to the end, the last moment, had great ideas about what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. So in a small window, I saw Larkspur and Bill McCown. And tonight, we adjourn in his memory. Thank you very much. Do any of the councilmembers have any remarks they would like to make this evening in closing? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Without objection, we are adjourned. And we will move into the next year, working together, focusing on public safety, infrastructure, and we're going to have a bridge that's going to be finished. We have a downtown that needs to be repaired. We have a lot of work to do. And as I alluded to earlier, Larkspur has been recognized in Marin County for having the most improved pavement index for all our streets of any city in Marin County. So I think we should be very proud of that. We're going to be recognized, I'm sure, in the press. And we're going to find a way to name every city staff member in the newspaper. So with that, I bid you good night.
As they deserve. Congratulations, Dan. We look forward to working with you over the coming year.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
We'll put all the staff members up on a podium every chance we get.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.